Good evening. Welcome to the Oxford Public Schools School Committee meeting of Monday, January 24th, 2022, 6:00 PM. Please note face coverings and masks are required in all school buildings until further notice. At this point, I would like to call the meeting to order. And also at this point, I'd like to open the floor to public comment. Comments are limited to topics related to school business. Speakers must identify themselves by name and address. They will be allowed to speak for up to three minutes, although the school committee may hear comments on unanticipated topics. Discussion or action on topics not specifically listed on the agenda will be postponed. So at this point, I would like to open the floor to public comment. Seeing lots of people out there, but no one coming forward, we will close the floor for public comment. And at this point, we'd like to turn a special presentation, our Community Service Award recipient presentation, to Richard Vincent. So we do have a little thing to read prior to this. This was the nomination write-up that we got for Rick Vincent, the Chafee Head Custodian. He is so kind to all of the staff and students. Rick puts a riddle on the whiteboard every Tuesday, and on other days, he'll list some facts that happened on that day. He decorates the school for our holidays and special occasions. Every time Rick sees someone, whether it's a student or teacher, he acknowledges them and puts a smile on their face. He was on the committee and helped organize the Reeds Across America event, which happened a couple of years ago. During any of our spirit days, he's always ready to participate and join in. On Veterans Day, he even wore his uniform to talk to the students about Veterans Day. In the Oxford community, Rick is always participating and volunteering to help out at the American Legion and will join in on numerous motorcycle rides to raise money and awareness. He's not only a custodian at Chafee, but a friend to all and is always offering help or an ear. Rick always goes above and beyond in every way possible, and even though he's battling cancer, he doesn't let it bring him down. He's one-of-a-kind guy and is a great asset to our school and town, community. In my opinion, I believe Rick Vincent is the perfect candidate for this award, and many, many of you agreed because he did receive the Community Service Award. The Town of Oxford School Committee takes great pride in presenting this certificate to Richard J. Vincent in recognition of his significant contributions to the Oxford community with our heartfelt congratulations and a sincere thank you. We want to thank you so much for your efforts each day and for the amazing dedication you always display. We are grateful to know we can count on you. Please accept our appreciation for all you, all that you do. And this was awarded the 24th day of January 2022. So at this point, I'd like to call Rick Vincent forward to accept this award.[324.12][324.12][applause] A lot of times we'll offer it up if you want to sit at the mic and say a few words. You certainly don't have to, but it's up to you.
I'm not a speech maker. I would just like to really thank the person that nominated me. I'd like to thank everybody that voted for me, and I want everyone to know it's an absolute pleasure working with the community and everybody in the school district. You guys are wonderful.[366.12][366.12][applause]
Yes, if anybody from the community would like to come up and say a few words about Rick, just please take a seat at the chair, yep, next to the mic. If you just want to identify yourself, that'd be great.
I'm Terrence Cummings, 9 Lucas Street. I'm the lieutenant, and I'm in charge of the Oxford Memorial Honor Guard. I would like to say that Richard is a very valued member of our honor guard. Our prime purpose is to ensure that the, any past veterans have a proper burial. And Richard is, as I say, a prime member of our honor guard, and we appreciate the service that, that was brought up in the, in the award. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[421.12][421.12][applause] I know there's a big crowd. If anybody else would like to come up and say anything regarding Rick? Yeah, come on up, Mr. Pelzarsky.
I just, whoever wrote that up did an awesome job, and in all honesty, I think everybody can agree, they probably only captured a teeny, teeny bit of what Rick does on a regular basis at, at Chafee, at the community. You'll see Rick doing the honor guard stuff. You'll see him raising funds for his, his favorite exercises throughout the town. He's putting in floors at the Legion Hall, you name it, he's doing it. Whoever nominated Rick Vincent was spot-on correct, and he gives his all. Every child and every adult in our building, every day, is thankful that Rick's part of our family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. [applause]. Anybody else? I know I mentioned it last time. I'll just say it briefly. Rick and I worked together for a few years at the Oxford Middle School. Many, many a days that we would chat, whether it was personal, professional, and I certainly appreciate, you know, all the conversations we had, and, you know, I know everything he's going through right now. He's an inspiration to me. He just keeps plugging away at it every day, and he is, to Mr. Pelzarsky's point, that captured him, but there is so much more to what Rick brings to a community. And, you know, I certainly valued our time together, as short as it was, because I went my way, he went his way, but thank you, Rick, for all you do. Keep fighting the good fight, my friend, and we are very, very lucky to have you in this district, so thank you.[529.16][529.16][applause] All right, at this point, we, Mr. Quinn, Principal Claire Barton's going to give us an update on a very hectic last six or seven school days down there.
Thank you, and just, Mr. Vincent is also a good cook, as everybody knows, and I've had the pleasure of his beef stew when I visited Chafee, so congratulations to Mr. Vincent. Okay, what I planned to do tonight, what I'm going to do, is I sent you some pictures last week of the rooms that were flooded at Clara Barton, so I just wanted to go over it and let, update you where we stand, where, where the, the workers are. And the first page you see, that is the room, obviously, where the, where it started, those pictures on the ceiling, that's Room B6, which was the reading room. Four adults used that space, the two reading interventionists and the two teacher assistants, so they did all get displaced out of that room. And also on the second page, you see Room B5, B7, and B8, which are two third-grade classrooms, and the occupational and physical therapy room. Those rooms also had to be relocated. I took these pictures last Wednesday. Actually, if you went into these rooms today, they are all empty, as they are, everything that's in storage needs to be in storage. The classes that moved have moved, and so they were just finishing drying everything up and cleaning everything before they put it in storage. And this last room, B4, is a third-grade classroom. As of today, they're only going to replace that tile that you see in the second picture. I haven't had an update on that from anybody, but that is the plan for that room right there, so the five classrooms that were damaged by, by the flood. So the new locations, as you can see on the next page, the two third-grade classes now are sharing the space in the library. That top picture is Ms. Tatro's class, and then the bottom, middle picture is Ms. Gilligan's class, so ultimately have split the library down the middle, you know, and, and the picture down the bottom, you know, just shows both of it. Each day, a little bit more, you know, aesthetics get put in, and it's, you know, we have some dividers that came in this afternoon, and it's, it's working out. It's certainly not the best, but it is, it is where, where we, what we have, and, you know, we kind of play the hand you're dealt with kind of thing, so. And the teachers have been great. Last Friday, or the Friday when we had the professional day, the Barton staff, I said it was like a barn building in, in Amish country, because everybody just, everybody in the school just got those teachers set up in their new locations, and it was really, it was really a great day for, for the, for the staff at Barton to put everybody, you know, try and make it as best, make a difficult situation as best as possible. And the last picture that you see is what used to be the principal's office. That is now the reading and Title I office. I have gone back to my cart rolling around the school, which just, and then the new cart just arrived today, so we're putting that together, and I'll be back up, but I have plenty of places to go. You know, Mrs. Hutchinson being part-time, I use her office around, so. And that's good, because we certainly needed a space to put all those four adults from the Title I in the reading room there, so. Just so you could see, see, you know, I know it's easy to talk about it, but I think the pictures help so you can see what, what actually happened and what we're dealing with. As far as an update, I did talk to the gentleman from Service Master today. He seems to think that him and his crew will be out next week. Tomorrow, they're going to start tearing up tiles and, and the carpets, and then by the end of next week, they will be out, and then it will be time to, you know, construction and build and, and that. I don't have specific details as to where that all is, you know, what's been ordered or what isn't, that kind of thing, but, you know, we're doing it. We've made the adjustments, and we'll be happy to answer any questions specifically about the flood.
Any questions from any of you?
I got to take a little.
You saw it last night, yeah.
I got to take a little tour.
Oh, Friday night, yeah.
When I went to pick up backpack and coat, and I appreciate you and your custodian kind of letting me get in there. My heart goes out to all the teachers and, you know, the students too. To go through all that, that was a lot, but I was very, very impressed, you know, seeing those new classrooms set up, seeing like the anchor charts and all the resources, and they're really, I mean, it's very well put together, more put together than some normal classrooms and, and buildings that have it all, you know, under normal circumstances. So it was phenomenal to see how the teachers just kind of are so resilient, and it seems like the kids are too, so. My hat goes off to all of you guys and your staff, because everything was so put together and only a matter of like a day or two there.
Right, yeah. No, like I said, that Friday, they really worked.
Amazing.
To make that, to get it all as, as best as possible.
But I'm sorry to hear that you guys are going through all that. It's, it's hard to see that happen.
I just had one comment, more so for the committee. That library looks so much better than these pictures show.
Correct, yeah.
Because I also got the tour. It really looks amazing when I was looking at the pictures. This looks crowded, and it really isn't, so just so everybody knows, it, it looked spacious and fabulous, and again, kudos to everyone who has been really.
Oh, and each day, you learn a little, a little bit more, like we're trying to, trying, you know, pass, because of the hallway down the end where the flood is, we can't go around that corner because they're working, so we have people trying not to cut through that space as much as possible, you know, as little as possible, so we're, we have new routes for lunch for the fourth grade. They actually go outside and walk around, so it's a little bit of an open campus model on your way to lunch or something, get a little fresh air and try to, try to, you know, to do that in respect, you know, the folks that are in there, the staff and the students, you know, so it's not just a, like a fishbowl, everybody walking through the library. So each day, we get a little better at it, but.
Yep.
Again, it's, it's, it's the teachers and the kids. They are, they're, it's just like they just picked up and, and rolled with it, so it's, I can't say thank you enough to them, so.
Yeah, it's good to hear.
So I know that, you know, everything's in discussion because it hinges on the insurance company coming in, and there's been different things talked about. Any updates as far as how, how long that space could be, we're, you know, for our community to know potentially? How long could our teachers be displaced and our students be displaced?
I, I've, it depends who you talk to, like, you know, it could be three months, four months, five months. I honestly don't know.
Right.
I don't know how the, how the logistics of that roll out once they, once they start doing that, so I'd have to, you know, talk to folks from the DPW or the insurance people and.
I had a conversation with Mike Lupus this week from DPW that had been very helpful, and figure out with the insurance what our options are and how long it's going to take. We should know more by the end of this week.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we all know nothing moves as fast as it used to back in the day. Everything is just so slow to, you know, get things done, especially when it comes to construction and.
Well, if you put the staff at Clara Barton in charge of this project, it would be done quickly, yes.
It would have been fixed by now. Well, thank you to all of them.
Questions?
Just real, you might, sorry if you touched upon this, John. Anything about, like, the quality of the air? Was there any damage to, to, you know, rugs or, or, you know, the, the walls? Are there any concern with mold, any? And then in light of what happened recently in the bathroom?
Sure.
Is there any air quality test, or is that on the radar?
They have their machines running, you know, the thing, and they've, they've cut the walls on the bottom up, you know, a couple inches to, to look for mold and dry all that out, and that will all be, obviously, addressed when they do it, but no, but no, you know, Ben, the gentleman there has, has not mentioned anything to me, or no one has said anything to me, you know, about that, but they, the, the machines are constantly on throughout the day, and they, I would assume they're circulating the air for them.
Ben explained it to me, too, is anything that's potential, even close to mold, is replaced, is cut out and replaced. After the fire on Thursday, we did replace all the air filters. DPW came in, they were great, replaced every air filter in the building, so we should be in pretty good shape air quality-wise, too.
And those are all just clean, too, Dave? They just had them on service and maintained a couple weeks ago. They're really sound. Should be in good shape.
All right, anything?
No, and I'll just, just, just because of, you know, the fire we had last week, and again, I have to give a, a shout-out to the community, the Clara Barton. The, the students rocked it the way it was handled. The teachers, you know, as I said, if I could take them all to Disney, I would. They just, it's just one of those things, you know, as, as administrators, we get training on this every few years, and sure enough, we, we had to deal with it, and, and the town and, and Mr. Lucas and his support, it just, it just flowed like we've done it before, and it's something we've never done before, you know, and being outside, then going into the gym, then getting on the buses to the high school, and lunch was ready when we got to the high school, and the movie was on, and, and parents, you know, appreciated the communication and, and everything like that, but I said to the kids, you know, I owe them something, because they, obviously, we had, a certain number of kids were upset, and, and the teachers did a great job comforting them, but it was just, they just rolled with it, and, and, you know, and that, that, that's a credit to the staff and, and the kids, because it, you know, a situation like that, you know, a lot of things could, could happen. I mean, I think if we stood outside for about 20 minutes longer, it would certainly have been cold, but, and then, you know, just that we opened the school Friday night, just to collect as much as we could, you know, Mrs. Griffin came, and about 70 parents came just to, just to get their backpacks and their coats and, you know, to do that, so we tried to, to do as, as, and I think at the end, we did as, as good as we could, and it, and it worked out fine, so. You know, those bathrooms aren't operation, so we, again, thinking of all what's going on, we, we made the staff bathrooms, kid bathrooms for a couple of weeks, just so we're not crossing in and out of the library, you know, you know, thinking, thinking of all these things, so. I'm not ready for any more drama. I'm, I'm good. I think that the staff is as well, but we are, you know, we're doing, we're doing okay, and I, like I said, the, the, the response from the community on Thursday was overwhelming, and, you know, it was great. It was great to see.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that, John. On behalf of the school committee, I, I do want to thank and commend all the, the parents, the students, just for their understanding, their patience, the, the staff, by all accounts, handled it beautifully. You know, it's, in crisis situations, it's important as adults and role models that we stay calm and follow the protocol. Sounds like all that was done. Administration in the building, great job. I know upper leadership did a great job, and the town. I've talked to Mike a few times, and he just can't say enough about how, how great all the, the police, the fire, the DPW, and the community were just embracing the, the emergencies and, and helping us, so thank you to the community, thank you to all the, the people who helped out that day. Great job to everybody, and like you said, hope it doesn't happen, you know, I, again, but, you know, if, if anything, I always like to try to pull positives out of not great things, and this pandemic of the last two years, if it's taught us anything, be flexible, be more resilient than ever, and just be able to, to, to roll with it and make it happen, and obviously, my colleagues have seen it firsthand, that the amazing preparation you guys did in such a short time to get kids right back in a teaching and learning mode, so great job to everybody. Thank you.
And just one, one thing on the fire, the, the fire chief and the police chief and Mr. Lucas are coming to our next staff meeting as sort of a debrief, you know, just to go over, you know, I don't know what we could do better, what we, you know, whatever, just to, just to kind of put some closure to it and, and take it from there. So that's going to happen in a couple of weeks, but.
Great idea.
We're good.
Any last? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
One last question.
Oh, one last one.
Yes, no.
But I just appreciate how the kids got from one building to the high school. Like, I don't even know if that would have entertained a lot of minds under any circumstance, even, you know, even what, to think, to have that foresight, to call buses, and the bus company came, like.
No, that was Mr. Lucas. He said, we will get the buses down here right away.
And the kids got there, and they had lunch, and they, they were comforted by a movie and time in the gym to play, and I don't know if the community knows this. I mean, I know those that had children that were in that school, you know, we got the updates and heard they had a great time. They felt like they had a field trip. They really did. They enjoyed themselves, which was such a blessing for us, because we knew our kids were safe, we knew they were happy, and there wasn't really, there was no trauma. You know what I mean? It was just a very unfortunate circumstance that happened, but that's a huge credit to everybody. I mean, I don't think it could have been handled any better than it was, so my heart goes out to everybody for doing that.
And maybe like to thank, like, to, you know, the food services for, you know, cooking pizza for $2.50 in, in a half an hour. I mean, that's, you know, just something that simple goes a long way.
It was amazing, everybody pitched in. The bus drivers, bus driver comes and says, it's going to take an hour. The bus drivers hustled. They were the first bus that started pulling up 30 minutes later.
Amazing.
Just as a clarification, because we're talking about, I had a couple of parents reach out to me. We did, we were not, we could not go back and have school the rest of the day in the building. Some parents said, was it really necessary? Once we were told, there's a lot of cleaning up to do, there were a lot of questions that remained, it was going to take hours, we didn't want the kids outside or stuck in the gym, we decided to move them so that everything could happen and get out of the way, so just as a clarification. But as you guys said, the staff was amazing, the teachers and counselors, with the kids the whole time, making it fun, not a panic, and everybody pitching in was incredible, and we, the staff was amazing handling everything and, and being with the kids the entire day and making it a great day. And then we did, we felt so supported by the police department, the fire department, DPW, Jen Callahan and her staff showed up to lend an, it was just great. It was a lot of teamwork, but it was great to see everybody rise to the occasion, was awesome, so. Lot of people working together.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Quinn.
Okay, thank you.
All right, at this point, we have our student representative, Molly Raymond. You're up, Molly.
For the middle school, the NJHS will be making cards for senior citizens in the Oxford community this month. They look forward to putting a smile on the face of our community members. The OMS Student Council just held their annual pet drive that ended this past Friday. All donations went to Second Chance Animal Shelter in East Brookfield. They are also getting ready for their Valentine's Day Candygram fundraiser. Sales will start tomorrow for $1 per candygram. These will be delivered on Valentine's Day. The chorus has six seventh-grade singers who are rehearsing and preparing for their virtual junior district chorus auditions in February. Results will be announced when available. The OMS OHS Ski-Snowboard Club season is in full swing with over 30 participants and five chaperones. The yearbook continues to stay busy taking pictures and getting ready for our yearbook club, which started today. Yearbooks are on sale for $25, and orders this year are online only. Students are happy to be in the art club. At the middle school, they are working on a collaborative, large-scale painting to hang in the walls, in the halls of OMS, based on the art of Jen Stark. And the green team continues to collect water bottles, paper goods, cardboard, and other recyclable materials every Friday morning. For the high school, the GSA are thinking about renaming the club. More information will be coming, and they are also hoping to decorate the gender-neutral bathrooms to make it more welcoming. The NHS is collecting toiletries for those in need until the end of the month, and Stuco is preparing Spirit Weekdays, which will be February 14th through 18th.
Thank you very much, Molly. Any questions for Molly, members?
Just a quick question. The fundraiser for the toiletries, can you just tell me who that is again?
For NHS.
NHS, all right.
And we're donating them to somewhere in Worcester, I think.
Okay, no, I just, I just don't know who to put on. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Molly, and, yeah, you can head out. Thank you. Before we vote on the meeting minutes, can we do that with only two members? Because two were absent. Can we vote on meeting minutes?
You can.
Okay.
And also, members who weren't at the meeting can vote on them if they would like to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we do have meeting minutes from January 10th, 2022. I know September and Molly were not here, Pal and I were. If you feel comfortable to vote on it, we do need a motion and a second to vote on the minutes of January 10th.
I make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing on call for the vote. Ms. Cook? Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
I'm a yes, four yes, one absent. We do have a donation, OMS Band Chorus Art Department, a donation that we do need to take a vote on. I can read this. We received an anonymous donation through Be a Superhero in honor of their super Spencer of $200 for our band, chorus, and arts department. If you please add this to the SC approval acceptance, it's cash. Again, that sent, should I be reading all of that? So I guess we need a motion to approve the donation from Be a Superhero for $200 to the Oxford Middle School.
I'll make the motion to accept the donation.
There's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, there's a second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing on call for the vote. Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, four yes, one absent. All right, moving right along. Superintendent's report. Mr. Lucas?
Yes, the first agenda item is the calendar. We did review it at the last, for discussion at the last meeting. We did make some changes based upon school committee, but also for some feedback from the union. We moved the parent-teacher conferences from November 21st and 22nd back to November 9th and 10th. As you can see on the calendar there, two schools will have evening parent-teacher conferences on November 9th and two on November 10th. But it'll be a little bit of a wonky week, but then the next week is a full week of school before we head into Thanksgiving. We also, the union also preferred that November 23rd stay a half-day, as it has been traditionally, and the day before winter vacation, so we moved those back to half-days. We do support that and feel that they're so good social, emotional, learning days for our students to be in the building while still giving families enough time to travel. The union did, and Kim Davis is here. Kim, you're welcome to speak to it, too, expressed concern about starting school earlier than, than normal. In our administrative meetings, our administrative team was very excited to start earlier. It was relayed to me that, that they used to start earlier in this district. I'm not sure if that's true or not. But, um, we were trying to get more days of school in so we could get out earlier in June, feeling that those days are valuable for student learning. And that was our hope with that. So we did discuss that, but this is in this draft. I don't know if we want to invite Kim up to the table.
Sure, if you'd like to come up.
Kim, do you want to come up?
Sure. Uh, yeah, as I had given to Mr. Lucas and talked to him about some of the feedback from the membership, we did, um, ask for feedback on the calendar, which we traditionally do. Send out, um, not this most recent draft, uh, draft five, but draft four went out to the membership. And the majority of the people, um, who gave us feedback felt that the start date was very early, being August twenty-second for new teachers. Our mentors also have to start with the new teachers, so that would make them coming back, um, on the twenty-second as well. It's about a week earlier than we've done recent, in recent years. There was no clear preference as to whether to have the Friday before Labor Day off or not off. I know on the draft calendar that it is off. The preference of the majority of the responses we got would be that eight-twenty-nine would probably be a, a preferred option for a start date with new teachers reporting on the twenty-fifth. So it kind of gives a little more time. There was also a lot of comment, the half-day, which, uh, Mr. Lucas put back in. There was a lot of comment as to why Good Friday is not off as has been tradition, traditionally in the calendar for a long time. There were a lot of people that were kind of surprised and not very pleased with that change in the calendar and would prefer to have Good Friday as a holiday off. So those were the two major points that were brought, that were brought back to, um, to the, the board as to, um, their feedback on the calendar, was it started too early? Plus, you also, the high school, starting on the twenty-second or the twenty, twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, um, there's no air conditioning. It's still hot. So those two things were the major, um, issues.
Any questions?
Comments?
No comments to her statements? Sure?
So Kim, I'll just speak to, um, uh, Good Friday. Because I have been a proponent of getting rid of Good Friday for many years. It is a Catholic holiday, um, being that we are now trying to be more inclusive in our community as well as our schools. Again, I brought it up and, um, I think the impression of the town and the people who received this calendar is that we take a lot of Catholic holidays off. And there really is, you know, we can change the name of Christmas Vacation to Winter Break. People still call it Christmas Vacation. But there is no justification for Good Friday being a public school holiday. That is strictly a Catholic holiday. And as I said, I've been wanting to get that off the calendar since six years, probably. And, um, so I just wanted to give you my logic for wanting that to come off.
Thank you.
Of course, I like Good Friday personally off, um, but that's probably for my own cause. I'm interested in, like, seeing the survey, if there was a survey that went out to staff. I know you said that you received feedback, but I'd love to know, like, how many members responded? Did every member get an opportunity to give their voice?
The feedback, the feedback did not go out in a survey form. It went out as an attachment to a draft. The draft calendar, uh, draft number four went out to the membership, and they were asked to respond with any feedback that they had. So, um, it did not go out in a survey-type form. Sometimes we do surveys, sometimes we don't. Um, this one just went out in an email to all the members for their feedback.
So I guess, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No.
You know, if there was a thought to really, you know, eliminate Good Friday, um, you know, I, I guess I'd really want to see what all the membership collectively feels and then have that, um, information. I'd also want to see how our, our community feels, our parents feel, because it's not, it shouldn't just be Mrs. Griffin making the calendar, right? Or Mrs. Forbes, or any of us. It should be us as a whole community doing it. So, um, when I make decisions, I just really would love to have as much evidence as I could have. And so I'm gonna request that, uh, you know, a survey goes out and, you know, people have a, a way to put their feedback in. And, you know, if that holiday should be eliminated, if that's really the course that the district is looking into. I know Mrs. Forbes said that's something that interests her. It might interest some other people in the community. Or if it's not something that people are open to.
Yeah.
So I will just speak for the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, because this is one of the places that it has come up recently. And it was brought to my attention that I had unintentionally scheduled a meeting during a Jewish High Holiday. Again, I didn't know. I never would have done that. However, someone came to me and said that we're not inclusive, we're, excuse me, we're not, yes, we are not inclusive, we are actually exclusive when it comes to religious holidays in the school. So since we brought up, it's not really just my opinion. That was brought to the DEI Committee at a meeting two months ago, I believe.
And then, so you're just kind of making me think on the fly here, and this could go on another future agenda as an item. But maybe there needs to be some policy work around that. You know, if there are legitimate High Holidays or Holidays that families entertain, we can't, obviously, we can't accommodate every single holiday. But maybe there's some type of language that's put in place that parents, if they communicate with teachers, that there is a, you know, a religious holiday, that students are given the opportunity to make up a work or make up an assignment if needed within so many days or something.
Should argue.
I believe we already got that.
I think it might be. So it's hard to be, as we know, inclusive of everything. It sounds like if you said that policy's already there, we're trying. So that could be something you share with the committee.
And being inclusive is certainly difficult, but trying to avoid the exclusivity, I guess, is more of what, where I'm coming from. Bringing forward the committee's information. And I think that we have talked, Mr. Lucas is also on the DEI Committee, and we have talked about, um, at least including in our calendar those High Holidays, so that we are at least acknowledging them, not necessarily as a day off of school, but acknowledging all of the different cultural celebrations and religions in our community. So it's definitely something we're talking about as well.
So just to acknowledge it.
Just to acknowledge it, not for any days off or whatever, but, um, that way we don't schedule meetings on days that we shouldn't.
We also, um, we also, in our collective bargaining agreement, do have, um, a clause that if, A, it has to be approved by the superintendent. I was talking to Mr. Lucas earlier today. Um, but if someone felt that, if it was voted out of the calendar, that if people felt that that was a religious holiday that they wanted to observe, they could send an email to Mr. Lucas. And he said he would definitely, of course, acknowledge it. And that could be taken, and, and it would not be taken. It'd be taken as a religious holiday, not as a sick day or a personal day. So, um, that is in our contract. I'm just, you know, I can, I am more than happy to do a very quick and dirty survey. I know you were planning on voting tonight. Um, if, if you want, I can do a survey. Of course, I can't do it tonight. But I can get it to you.
I'm okay with that too. We don't have to ever vote tonight.
Lucas, you guys have anything else? Because I'm glad that Mrs. Griffin brought that up, because that was the first thing I was gonna ask, if we could see the data, uh, the survey that went out. So there wasn't one, so we'd certainly love to see one. Looks like there's three big sticking points, so maybe that's the three questions you asked. The start date, the half-days for Thanksgiving and winter break, and Good Friday. I didn't really hear too much else. Um, I would like to know, uh, the twenty-second and twenty-third, you talked about, teachers would have to come in and be the mentors. I'd like to know that percentage. Because if we're gonna make a decision on a small percentage of teachers, um, because the majority of them will be back on the twenty-fourth, which is traditionally the day before you open up, um, I would ask to consider, you know, me as a, as a principal, I would love to have a two-day week, a four-day week, and then a four-day week. That's where you can just start to grow your relationships, get your routines going. I think that's a great start to the school year. You get them in for a few days, you start to build relationships, routines, builds into the next week. And you maybe even continue to enforce that, get some baseline data, and then you can really just start the true teaching, you know, dive right in on the, that full week of the twelfth. You know, to me, people who know me, we're always gonna do what's in the best interest of kids. Like, I'll, I'll look at this calendar and my vote will be on what's in the best interest of kids. You say the weather. I'm not sure what the difference of the weather is gonna be on the twenty-fifth as opposed to the twenty-ninth. I mean, it could be eighty on both days, it could be seventy-five, it could be ninety. We don't know. So all that's gonna linger into September too. So I definitely want data. I, I, a little disappointed a survey didn't come out, because I think that's how you get feedback from a membership. I see a lot of members in here. I'd love to hear from anybody. That'd be great. It's good to see people. If you'd like to come up, come on up and get right to the microphone. Let's hear your feedback. Get another chair.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Gilligan, and yes, I'm one of the classrooms that's in the library, so take it easy on me, please. But I have to correct you, Mrs. Forbes, Good Friday is not a Catholic holiday. It is a Christian holiday. And if you're Protestant, like I am, or if you're Catholic, you still want to observe the holiday. And personally, if that is a day that we have to come to school, that is personally a day, I will not attend school. As well, I feel, in the opinion of many of our membership, will not be attending school on that day. I don't foresee seeing many children at school either, because it is a traditional holiday. If you wanna call it a holiday or a religious time of respect and thought, that I think there are enough families that still have some tradition about what goes on. For the Protestants, it is a time of quiet between twelve and three P.M. Catholic is after three o'clock. So when you bring in the Protestant look on it, you're really doing us disjustice by saying that we should not observe that time. Also, I was one of the people that, we had a discussion a, as a board. And then we also had Kim send out to every single member the third draft of the calendar. And each of us were allowed to comment on our thoughts. And I personally commented on everything you're talking about, Dave. The start of school, having Labor, the day before Labor Day off, the weekend, I don't know why that would be brought up. We've never done that in this district, but maybe one day, one time since I've been here in twenty years. The Good Friday and bringing, and having that half-day of Thanksgiving, before Thanksgiving. There's been one day in twenty years that we did not have school the day before Thanksgiving, and that was because of a snowstorm. So, in that regards, I don't think it's based on a survey. We all had the opportunity. Kim gave us more than enough time. She gave us over a week to respond to her. At a board meeting, we discussed everything of the comments that the board members brought, that the membership brought back to us. So it's not, it doesn't matter if it was a survey, or if it was, email me back and tell, tell us how you feel about the calendar. Because nothing in our contract states that it has to be in a survey format.
Understood, Bonnie.
So.
Right now, there's four members up here that have zero feedback from the membership. And in twenty twenty-two, where you can just do a Google form.
Right.
Real quick, that's gonna generate a lot of data. I don't think that's asking a lot. And to your point about the half a day, like, I keep hearing this, we haven't had this in twenty years. Well, it's time to change. We have new leadership. We have new vision. I have no problem with the day before Thanksgiving break. Why not a full day? Please explain to me why a half a day? What educational value do we get out of a half a day?
Okay, can I speak to that?
Hang on, I've asked a question. You're more than welcome to join in if you want to grab another chair.
Well, the, the idea of it is how many students, if we're talking about in the good of the students, we're here for the students. How many are going to attend a full day of school on the day before a holiday for traveling purposes?
The same that would do a half a day?
Again, we have more people, more students attend on that half-day, because they can pick their student up at, at noon and head to grandma's or grandpa's.
So then why wouldn't you just take the day off? Have a full day off. Just give everybody the whole day. And we, full days of instruction are really important, right? In the months that we can get the attention of kids and maintain that. We all know that when the weather gets nice again later on in the year, it's really difficult, right? I'm just asking us to consider that. I have no problem with the day off. Just take the whole day. The half a day, to me, is just a, a day that's, we're in the building, but are we getting the bang out of our buck? Are we getting the value for that day? So take the whole day off.
Well, I think.
To your point about Good Friday, take, make that a half a day. If, if, if the, the recognition is after noon time, then make that the half a day. That at least has some, some meaning behind it, right? There's some reasoning with doing it. To take the half a day on before Thanksgiving, before winter break, I just don't see the value in it. And that's all I'm, I would love to hear the opinion, again, in a survey, to see how many respond to that.
Well, the thing, to go back to that, there's nothing in our contract that says that we are supposed to supply the school committee data.
It's not about the contract, Bonnie. It's about what's best for kids. And there's nothing that says we have to, we can approve the agenda too. We want to work together on it.
Exactly. I agree.
Why is this a contractual thing? I don't get that.
Because I, I feel like you're, you're coming down on the people who are trying to do their best work.
No, all we're asking for is feedback from the membership, not from, in all due respect, I appreciate all of you being out here today. We just want feedback from the membership. And I don't know, I don't think Mrs. Griffin's request was that.
You know, and I'm fine, like, if, if, you know, there's that, it's up to you how you want to share the, the, you know, I know you gave us the update. Again, I'd love to, to see though, like, how many members, I'm, I'm assuming everybody's voice that wanted to have a voice said it. It sounds like that's what you're saying tonight. Um, and I didn't know that, to be honest with you. I heard that, you know, people gave it. Now that you're speaking to it, I have more evidence and I'm hearing from you that enough opportunity was given to every educator in the district to voice their opinion. I, you know, when I make a decision, I just don't want to hear after the fact, you never asked, and I never got to tell. And therefore, you made this decision, and you made it with, you know, not hearing from me. So when I ask for a survey, it's just to make an opportunity to extend that, so everybody has an opportunity to speak. So, you know, I, I put full trust, you know, in your great leadership that you guys have as a union, that if that's what you're voicing tonight, that everybody had their opportunity to say their piece, then that's a great update for us. And, you know, um, I'd love to know the exact number of people, you know, but that always helps me make a more informed decision. But again, some, some unions are very vocal and some, you know, sometimes there's a lot of representation and people come and speak up. But sometimes, you know, I've lived in the same type of shoes as an educator. It might be only a few voices that are making all the decisions. And sometimes it's because the teachers, I'll be honest. I get a, I get a calendar, I get something to do, and I know grades are due this week here, right? Or they're, they're coming out. They were for me too. If I got that, it might go to the bottom of my pile, and I might say, oh, I'm gonna get back to that. And then I just might not, but I might have an opinion. So again, I just didn't want to leave anybody out. Like, if, if it just got shuffled in the deck for some of your teachers and they didn't respond back, I'd want them to have that opportunity.
I just wanted to speak to the feasibility of the half-days. For a teacher, first of all, and for socially-emotional learning for the kids, we're, you know, we're big about that this year, pushing the socially-emotional. The day before the winter break and the day before Thanksgiving is the day that we kind of come together with the kids for that half a day and just go, ah, we've worked really hard up until now. We're gonna celebrate with you before you go celebrate with your family, because we're a mini-family in our classroom. We're a mini-community, we're a mini-family. And if you gave that whole day off, well, let me tell you something. The day before that would be spent doing that, or it wouldn't be this full-out learning that you're talking about. And it wouldn't be that way if you had the full day before, um, of school. The reason why us teachers are very passionate about the fact that it's a half-day is because it's just enough for us to be able to love on the kids, do something special for them, bring little tokens of our appreciation and affection for them, say, good job, you've done a great job working until now. Now's the time for, as a class, let's just take a breath before we go off and celebrate with our families. And I think that that socially-emotionally is very important for the students. I mean, because we, we are on track with our curriculum. We haven't let COVID or anything, fires, floods, you name it, has not deterred us from keeping on track with our curriculum. These kids work hard. These kids work hard, and I feel like they deserve that little bit of that half-day just like we do. Instead of just sending them off. I know that when COVID hit, at the end of the school year, as teachers, we were heartbroken that we didn't have that chance to do our special little things with our classes to kind of tie up the end of the year. We got to say goodbye to them, waving to them as they were driving by and handing them the stuff, but it's not the same thing. And I feel like, you know, if you want us to continue to do the social-emotional learning, you have to consider that it's not always about, you know, where can we get the most bang for our buck? And, and, you know, have a full day of school or not have a full day of school. It's also about taking those little moments and just being able to enjoy it as a community with our kids in our classroom. That's all I really had to say.
Thank you for sharing that, I totally understand that, but you also understand as educators, right? Social-emotional learning is embedded in classrooms every single day.
Oh, I do.
Every single day.
I do.
So the breathing, right, the, the rewards, uh, the praise, the positive praise, the, the, the building on those not-great moments and helping kids grow. That happens every single day, so I don't, it sounds like you're saying this day is like this glorified day.
No, it's not.
I get it, it's a little bit more special, but it's also happening every single day. And the other thing you've got to consider, please, as a board, we have to consider K to 12. We're not just thinking about first, second, third grade, I'm pretty sure up at the high school, they're not having those types of moments. And I'm not trying to compare one to the other, but we have to make a decision for the collective whole. So you could do that in a full day, what's the, why not utilize that time and have full days to, to create activities? And kids can breathe and relax, and you can still embed some sort of activities that make kids feel whole, that makes kids feel valued. Because, yeah, holidays, as we all know in education, holidays are really difficult times for kids. It brings up a lot of emotions, it brings up a lot of things from the past. I'm just advocating this, let's have a full day or a no day. The half-days to me, again, I, I understand I said a bang for the buck, and I know that sounds like probably not the best word to say. I just want to utilize the 180 days we have to the best of our ability, be efficient with that time. And I just feel half-days, we, we lose a little bit, that's all. So I was just asking us to consider either go full or off, I have no problem with it being off, no problem at all. It just builds in another day at another point in the year. So I appreciate your feedback, thank you. Anybody else from the public that wants, I mean, uh, well, public, but any staff members would like to come forward?
Hi, guys.
Hi.
I wasn't planning on, um, speaking, but.
I always fire you up, though, so I know.
You do, Dave, you have that way about you, and I appreciate that.
You'd always come after me in staff meetings.
Okay, two, two things, um, to your last point about the full day or the half-day and, you know, have a full day or have no day before Thanksgiving. It seemed a little counterintuitive to what you originally said about trying to get as many days in as we could.
Correct.
At the beginning of the year, so.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
I agree.
Point observed.
Yeah, no, I agree, trying to compromise.
Okay, and, um, the second thing was about Good Friday, um, Bonnie misspoke. It's okay, um, the, the holiest day of the year is Good Friday between 12 and 3:00. And I don't think anybody's out of line to put a survey out regarding who would actually need to observe those hours in particular. Those aren't the only hours where, I don't want to say activities, but where, um, observations are going on during that day. But I don't think it's out of line to ask for a survey, sorry, Kim.
No, I'm fully, if, no, if that's what you would like on that particular question, I'd be more than happy to do it.
That's pretty much it, I just wanted to put my two cents in.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Always appreciated, yes, Mrs. Forbes?
So just one last comment for me.
Yeah, parents, too, please. Yeah.
The parents, survey the parents.
I was going to make sure they got their say, too, because I, like I said before, I, and I know you guys feel the same way. When we make decisions, we want to make them in unison with our whole community, because we're one community, you know, we're one family. And it's hard, we want to be respectful of everybody, we want to do everything we can, but we can't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Trust me, I have five kids, I'm going to be dry. Yeah, they pump off.
And just a question, um.
Sure.
You teach at the, in the Algonquin district?
No, I teach in the middle, uh, the middle school, yeah.
What, what does your, um, day before Thanksgiving look like, just out of curiosity?
Out of curiosity, I believe it's a half-day.
Okay.
I do also believe sometimes we have had PD, you know, and, or building activities, you know, where we've stayed there. I know it's difficult, like, as teachers, right, sometimes you have all your students that, you have a, a mass exodus, you know? Sometimes the kids are there, and sometimes, some years you get classes where kids are not there. And I think as educators, we always do our best, and we try to have school whenever we're told to have school. And, you know, we all know what it's like, it's hard to, to get a captive audience, and so you try to do your best learning at all times of the year. And so, you know, I'd love to hear what you folks think, I mean, I know half-days are, are kind of beneficial to a lot of families. Like, the valid point that was made tonight, that, you know, some people have to travel, right? Some people have to go shopping, because we're teachers and we leave those things for the last possible minute, and then we have everybody coming the next day to our house, right? So like, things like that happen, it's, so.
Dave, what is the what you said, um, calendar look like?
No, non-school day.
No school?
Non-school day.
So it would be nice, too, for us to do our homework as well, like, maybe I need to do some homework and look at what other surrounding communities do. Like, how many of our surrounding towns take it a half-day, a full-day? But most important, right, it doesn't really matter what everybody else in the world around us does, what matters is what we think is best as a community.
Correct.
So, you know, we could do our homework and, and look from all different places, but I'd rather hear what the community feels is best. That's just my opinion.
Anything else, Donna?
No, I guess that's it, I, Mr. Lucas, I, what is Tantask would do traditionally?
Traditionally, half-day on Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Okay, I would just, you know, litmus test, thank you.
Thank you. True teacher.
So do we, do we want me to survey the parents and Kim will survey her folks?
Sorry to give you more work.
Does that sound good? Kim, does that sound good?
Okay. I mean, unless you want us to vote tonight, and I think you know where some of us are probably going to vote, I mean.
I'm, I'm.
We don't have a lot of informed information.
I've refrained, because I've done.
I'm okay waiting for some more feedback, and Kim and I can chat again, too.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to defer the vote.
I second that.
Any more, any discussion to go any further? And that doesn't mean we can't continue to have discussion with membership out, in the community out here. We're just voting to, um, delay the, the vote. Call for the vote, Ms. Cook, Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm a yes, four yes, one absent, we will delay the vote. When's our next meeting?
Valentine's Day, yeah, February 14. Mr. Chairman, would you like me to just send a survey to the entire district, families and staff, so that you have input of all employees?
If that pleases.
That's what I was going to ask.
That'd be easier to send one survey to everybody.
Sure.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
And then staff can choose the staff box and.
Right.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Any other comments or feedback from anybody in the audience? Yes, yes, Ms. Cook?
Well, as a former student at the high school, I know like the day before Thanksgiving for the pep rally is like something I look forward to. So I don't know if they would have to change that, but I know that was something I looked forward to a lot in high school if you were heavily involved, so.
Say that again?
The pep rally, like, for the Thanksgiving Day game before, the, like, football, that was something I looked forward to.
And that's the half-day.
Yeah, like, we still went to class and everything, they just shortened the period, so you saw all of your teachers in all your classes for like 20 minutes or something, I don't know, I'm a little washed up, but.
I think they did that again this year.
Yeah, but it is.
And I heard positive things about that now.
It is something to, like, look forward to.
Oh, it's like a tradition, a lot to what.
Yeah, and it's nice because they get, like, all of the athletes involved, not just the football team, but all of the fall athletes. So I know, like, hopefully that's something they wouldn't get rid of if we get rid of the half-day.
Okay.
And do you remember the middle school, I'm sorry, what they do?
I, I, I don't remember.
Go back, yeah.
Yeah.
I know, I'll let Mrs. Greeno answer it.
I don't want to put Mrs. Greeno on the spot.
She asked what the middle school does the half-day before Thanksgiving.
I don't want to put you on the spot.
Well, pre-COVID, um, we had one awesome dodgeball tournament, and it was probably the better-than-sprey day, it was the highlight. Kids talked about it the first day of school, we doing the dodgeball tournament, oh, if you're good, you know, and they, and they were good. We have, we have a great dodgeball tournament the day before, crazy, crazy fun. Social-emotional.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Davis.
Done with me?
Thank you, Kim.
Oh, sorry, Mrs. Forbes.
I just wanted to apologize for mislabeling the holiday as a Catholic and not a Christian holiday. And just for the record, I am a practicing Catholic as well, so no disrespect intended to the Catholics, the Christians, or the holiday itself.
And I just want to thank all of you for coming out, I know as a former principal here, current principal, the work that you all do each and every day, it, it, you do it all. So I thank you, I hope people didn't take my tone as being negative towards teachers or staff, absolutely not. I just want to do what's best for kids, and I want to try to think out of the box at times, and we want to be informed with all the information and to make decisions. Those of you that know me, always in the best interest of kids, that's what this is about. So I appreciate you all coming out, thank you very much, more than welcome to stay, or.
Are you done with me, Mr. Konakioli?
Yes, we're done with you, yeah.
Because you had mentioned at the last school committee meeting that you wanted to speak to me about certain issues?
Yeah, and you had mentioned to me that you didn't have that information for me, so I don't think we need to talk about it.
Oh, no, I do have, you said we could speak at the school committee meeting, so I'm prepared to speak if you wanted to discuss anything.
Well, I'm going to be lot, asking for a lot of data points, so will you have all those data points?
What data points are you looking for?
Percentage of teachers that are in the district, percentage of teachers that are in the union. Do you have an executive board, uh, how many members, um, are in the whole executive board? How many meetings do you have a month, what's your average attendance, how do decisions get made, so I have a lot of questions.
Okay, well, in respect.
And I just don't want to rush it in right now, you said to me in an email that you weren't prepared to do it tonight.
Oh, no, I did not say that, I offered to be, I offered to meet with you private.
You did, so, Mrs. Davis. Mrs. Davis.
Chairman Konakioli.
Yep, I, again.
Please let me speak, if you ask me these questions, please let me speak to them. First of all, we are a duly-elected board, I am the duly-elected president, we have a duly-elected vice president and board that meets on a regular basis. We are in regular communication with our membership, okay? We are a separate entity, we are not governed by the school committee, we are a separate entity. The decision-making process is within the membership. If a member has a question about it, they are more than willing and able to talk to a building rep or a member or a board member to ask their questions. Again, we are a separate entity.
Okay, but I'm not asking for anything, I just asked for percentage of teachers that are in the district, you didn't answer. I asked for the percentage of teachers that are in the membership, you didn't answer. You told me that you were doing, this decision-making, you're a separate entity, I understand, we're not governing you. But decisions that, some decisions that get made affect students, and that affects us or programs.
Well, our decisions.
So all I was asking was for general data, you pushed me to continue to ask you these questions when I asked you to not.
Mr. Konakioli, those.
You didn't answer really many of my questions.
Those things you can get from the superintendent or the central office. If you want to know those answers, you can get those from there.
But as the president of the union, you should be able to tell me how many times a week, uh, how many times a month you meet.
But, with all due respect, I don't owe you those answers.
You don't owe the public that answer, you don't owe parents that answer, how many times the membership meets?
I don't owe you. I don't, I do not owe the school committee those answers.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mrs. Davis.
We are a separate entity.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. No problem.
Mr. Lucas, personnel update?
Yes, we'd like to welcome, uh, four new hires to the Oxford Public Schools. Victoria Delito will be our long-term sub-teacher at the high school. Zachary Tremblay will be our substitute teacher district-wide in all four schools. Rebecca Brazo is our new instructional aide at Chafee, like to welcome her also. Um, and Justin Richards is our new dean of students at the high school, um, and just started today also. So we'd like to welcome all four of those folks to our, to our group and our team here in Oxford.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas, welcome aboard to all the new staff members.
Thank you, thank you. I just have a, we just be, since the, uh, sending out of the agenda, we get an update from the MSBA that I wanted to share with you guys about the middle school, and to quote the email from MSBA, "We anticipate contacting districts by way of call or letter in late January, early February, either encouraging them to refile their SOI in 2022 for consideration or to hold on to refiling as we are proceeding with an invitation into eligibility period." So we're still on hold, like everything else with COVID, it's delayed, um, as soon as we know, I'll let you guys know. If we are not chosen this year for the middle school, we have until April 29th to resubmit our SOI, okay? And if it's okay with the chair and the committee, I'd like to give an update on my superintendent calls at the next school committee meeting. If that's okay with you guys, um, that would be great, and that's, and that's all I have today.
All right, thank you, any questions for Mr. Lucas? Okay, subcommittee, uh, policy committee, any updates? Oh, we do have a.
We have one policy to look at this evening for a second read, if I do recall correctly, and it's for emergency closings.
Would you like to read that, Mrs. Griffin?
Sure, so this is policy E B C D, emergency closings. The superintendent may close the schools or dismiss them early in the event of hazardous weather or other emergencies that threaten the health, safety of students and personnel. While it may be prudent under certain circumstances to excuse all students from attending schools, to delay the opening hour or to dismiss students early, the superintendent has the responsibility to see that as much of the administrative, supervisory, and operational activity is continued as may be possible. Therefore, if conditions affect only a single school, only that school will be closed. In making the decision to close schools, the superintendent will consider many factors, including the following principal ones relating to the fundamental concerns for safety and health of the children. One, weather conditions, both existing and predicted. Two, driving, traffic, and parking conditions affecting public and private transportation facility, uh, facilities. Three, actual occurrences or imminent possibility of any emergency conditions that would make the operation of schools difficult or dangerous. Four, inability of teaching personnel to report for duty, which might result in inadequate supervision of students. The superintendent will weigh these factors and take action to close the schools only after consultation with public works and public safety authorities and with school officials from neighboring towns. Students, parents slash guardians and staff will be informed early in school, in each school year, of the procedures that will be used to notify them in case of emergency closings. When schools are closed for emergency reasons, staff members will comply with school committee policies in reporting for work. Source M A S C, legal references M G L, 71, section 4, 71, section 4A. First reading was January 10th, 2022, and if tonight we approve, it will be adopted January 24th, 2022.
Okay.
It was almost like you knew it was coming, wow.
I tell you, it's like Margaret when she came home and she said, my teacher knew exactly where to take me during that unexpected fire drill.
All right, so we need a motion to approve, uh.
This is the practice, all the good stuff.
I make a motion to accept this as read and ready.
All right, we have a second, any more discussion?
No, I, and I, I just want to commend our superintendent again and the staff for, you know, we're already doing these things. Even though we're making a policy for, um, we've already, we're doing the best practices, so I appreciate that.
And just, since you mentioned it, DPW with communication has been amazing. So every time we've had an issue or concern, they communicate right away, I would just like to thank them for that, because it's terrific. Uh, we've had some wacky stuff happen since I started here, second day of school, we had the flooding. Um, and they've been wonderful and communicate really expertly, and, and again, they're like, like us, they have the kids' best interests at heart.
Yeah.
So that's a huge help, I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, we're blessed to have excellent town departments all around, between DPW Fire and, and police and, um, the town hall, so.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, uh, no more discussion, call for the vote, Mrs. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
I'm a yes, four yes, one absent. Personnel and negotiations, subcommittee, any updates? You, are you on that, Mrs. Forbes?
No, oh, I am.
Yes, you are.
Yeah, sorry, I'm like, um, we have our first meeting with the OEA Thursday, and we have our first meeting with the custodian. And we have our first meeting with the custodians February eighth, I believe.
Yes, I think so, yep.
And that's all I have for updates.
Okay, thank you. School Buildings and Safety Subcommittee, we have not had anything formal, but I know there's been a lot of school building issues as late at the high school in Chafee, uh, excuse me, Clara Barton. But again, just thank you to all members of our Oxford Public School staff and community, you know, DPW, Oxford Police, Oxford Fire, thank you so much. District Accountability.
Can I just back up for one second? I know you mentioned high schools and it made me think, you know, I'm aware of it. I think probably high school families are aware of it, but maybe not our community at large.
Yeah.
There was also the unfortunate.
Yes.
Bursting of a pipe.
Yeah.
And because of the freezing cold weather we had.
Correct.
Could you speak to that for a minute so the community at large knows about that?
Sure. So we had a pipe burst between the teachers' lunchroom, which is off of the cafeteria, and one of the girls' bathrooms that's outside the gym area. Burst and water leaked into the cafeteria, leaked into the main office, and thankfully that was it. Insurance has looked at it, they're giving us some estimates. We were able to open, it did not prevent us from opening school. Our custodians came in the next day and cleaned for hours, they were amazing, did a great job. So our major concerns at this point is some of the walls in the bathroom, the teachers' lunchroom. Cafeteria doesn't appear to have any damage at all, but it's being inspected, and then the rug in the main offices are other concern. So it could have been much worse. So it didn't interrupt any other classrooms or anything like that, so in that sense, we were, we were very lucky, so.
And do we expect like any work that needs to be done, or?
Just like at Barton, they're gonna have to come in and do some work, they're gonna have to do some cutting in the teachers' lunchroom and replace some things. So we're still waiting to hear back definitively what that's gonna be.
And we don't know about the cafeteria, like as far as, did things look okay, but it's hard for us?
Things look great. You wouldn't notice anything happen in the cafeteria because the flooring is so solid and everything. But, but we're gonna, obviously the insurance company does a great job. They inspect everything, they don't want any questions left. If there's anything questionable, it just gets replaced.
Okay.
So we're waiting more information on that.
And again, as you said, a huge thank you to the DPW and to you too, Mr. Lucas, 'cause I, I know it's been in the middle of your weekend.
Yeah, that's all right.
And then we get an update.
It's all right.
I keep praying, but then we get, you know, no more.
We've said all year, it's all hands on deck, and every one of these, it's had our, our staff has really responded and, and done whatever they can to keep the kids in school and, and work together, so it's great.
Hopefully no more cold weather.
A lot of great people working here.
All right, District Accountability and Curriculum Subcommittee, anything there?
We have not met since our last meeting, and I think the, if I recall correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we're gonna meet again somewhere in the middle of, well, we're about the middle of the year now, but like coming up, maybe in another month or two, and we're gonna look at some more data potentially. I know we got excellent reports on our student progress and we got to see a lot of that formative data that was being used. And I know that there's some standardized assessments that the district has participated in through some nice grant work that has been done.
Yes.
So I know we're gonna have another update when it's an appropriate time to look at all that data, and I know, I believe more of that testing was happening only a week or two ago in the classrooms. So we'll get some more reports, hopefully in another month or so, and have another update for the committee.
All right, thank you. Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, Mrs. Forbes?
All right, we had our monthly meeting two weeks ago. Don't remember the date. Our guest speaker was a couple of students from the SGA. And part of the discussion was the name being something that apparently has been in circulation since the seventies or eighties maybe. So it brought it to their attention and gave them some good key points to think about. Our guest speaker for the February ninth meeting is gonna be our district K-12 nurse, Amy Grenette. She's gonna come in and speak to the group about the mental health of our students, not obviously anyone in particular, just overall, how things are going and possibly, I told her not to come with questions, come with solutions. So information and solutions is what we're looking for. And we also discussed the possibility of having, we had a transgender student come and speak to our group two months ago, and there was an opportunity for some professional development for inclusive language and just some general information. And unfortunately, due to circumstances, it didn't happen at the PD day. So we had talked about reaching out to Nikki and asking her if she would come in, do some sort of professional development for the staff as well as some sort of, I don't wanna call it a rally, but some sort of, um, for students.
Yeah.
Rally, if you will. Other than that, we had no updates. Our survey that we've been working on for months, we've decided to really look at the what, why, and who, what we're gonna do with that. The survey was really long, then we decided we're gonna try to rework it about every month since this committee began. So that is currently on hold until we determine what we wanna know, why we wanna know it, and what we're gonna do about it. So that's my update.
Thank you very much. Great work going on there. All right, we do have a warrant report, Mrs. Griffin?
So we have a warrant report for this evening, January twenty-fourth, 2020. And we have an accounts payable warrant signed on January eighteenth, 2022 for a hundred eighty-six thousand, eight hundred twenty-nine dollars and thirty cents. A payroll warrant signed January, or dated January twentieth, 2022 for six hundred eighty-four thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars and ninety-five cents. A special payroll dated January twentieth, 2022 for two thousand five hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents. And an accounts payable warrant dated January twenty-fifth, 2022 for sixty-eight thousand, one hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty-six cents, and that is all.
Thank you. Members Forum, Ms. Cook?
I don't have anything to add.
All right, Mrs. Forbes?
I'd just like to say another congratulations to Mr. Vincent, and as was stated, that's not even the half of what he does for the town, the schools, the community, his friends, strangers, so well deserved and congratulations again to him. And I only had one other thing. Oh, I also wanted to just compliment and commend everyone involved in that Barton scenario. Take a bad situation, if you could pick the best scenario, it was exactly what happened here. It was wonderful. Everyone stepped it up, everyone from the top right down to the bottom. And without everyone doing all that they did, it would not have been as smooth and safe and efficient. I mean, they pulled those buses around and those kids got on the buses like they did it every day. It was really incredible. So a big shout out to the teachers and everybody who was involved, the town departments and everyone who responded so quickly for the safety of our students.
All right, thank you.
That's all.
Griffin?
Yeah, big shout out to the students too, that they were just so phenomenal. But that's because they have such great teachers, right, that they, and administrators. Mr. Lucas is gonna give an update on his goals for us, and that was something I was kinda bugging to put on the next agenda. I always need those updates myself and reminders, so please, folks, remind me if there's certain policies and different things that you want me to do. And any data that you want in our upcoming, you know, data curriculum meetings that we have. And that's about it, and just a huge thank you to everybody again for the tremendous work that's happened.
Yep, I agree, thank you. Just echo, you know, Mr. Vincent, well deserved. You, you heard me say it, a great, great man. And again, kudos to everybody who has stepped up through these, you know, unfortunate situations, but it's why you have procedures and protocols in place. Again, I wanna thank all the teacher, teaching staff that came out today and voiced opinions. It's great to hear feedback. Now we're really looking forward to that written feedback, just so that we can make good decisions as a board, appreciate that. And I believe this is his last meeting, but I wanna give a shout out to Joe Janarico, who is behind the camera right now. You wanna talk about a guy who's an unsung hero. I had the pleasure of, of starting to work with Joe at Project Coffee years ago. This guy will do anything you ask him to do and always do it with a smile and, and do it well. If anybody has watched any of these meetings or any productions that he films, he does an amazing job. He steps up when we ask him to. And just thank you very much, Joe. And who knows, he'll probably be knocking on your door again at some point. I wouldn't blame you if you decline us, but I really.
He's gonna wanna move.
On behalf of the board and on behalf of the, the, all the stakeholders in the Oxford Public Schools, thank you for filming us and getting us out there. And I know, and I know you'll continue to do it with a lot of great things going on in the building, so thanks, Joe. One last thing, we do have to decide on a date for our next public forum. I know we were talking about maybe a weekend, a Saturday. Like Saturday, like the fifth of February, is that too quick? Would that be enough time to get something out? Our next meeting is what, the fourteenth? We could advertise it for the nineteenth. But that's like the Saturday before February vacation, but you know, people will probably be staying local. I'm just thinking of a Saturday.
I can do the fifth. I don't know if that gives the community enough time, but.
Yeah.
I believe I can too. I don't know what, are you thinking earlier or later, or?
I don't know, I was thinking like, I don't know, one o'clock.
Oh, I was thinking morning.
All right, we can do morning.
Get in, get out. One o'clock is middle of a Saturday.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's gonna be inconvenient for families.
Yeah, no, I'm just, whatever. You wanted to try ten-thirty, eleven, ten?
Maybe ten-thirty, ten o'clock, eleven, not too early. Give everybody time.
Ten to twelve?
Ten to twelve?
Ten to twelve?
I'm thinking basketball. I'm thinking, I'm thinking sports.
Oh, right, our games are early.
And I'm also thinking like normally we have the, the students and the town leagues and different things happening in the morning.
Oh, okay.
And I wouldn't wanna, you know, if it's really, really early, it might be hard for those parents that worked all week to get there. But if it's right in that spot where some parents pays, play sports, not that everybody plays sports in this town, but I would wanna be.
Wanna say like twelve-thirty to two, and it can be, you know, no? All right, ten to, ten to twelve?
I, I don't care. I'll get out of bed for it, so. I like ten to twelve.
All right, can we, can we see if we can reserve the Carabuncle House from, on February fifth, ten to twelve? And if we can do that, we will send out a email, we'll advertise that. We can hopefully put it on the cable channel as well, maybe. All right.
And then, um, thank you for bringing that point up about the, the parent forum and coffee. One thing that I know that I was just, you know, throwing out there, I know we use Naviance, I'm learning about that. I bugged Mr. Lucas, 'cause I, you know, signing those warrants, you get to see all the great things that we're investing in.
Yeah.
And so I heard that, that we've had some extensive training here at the high school, which is fantastic. And then it led me to think as a parent, how much training I need. Now I'm just finally getting a child into the eighth grade class who will be transitioning into high school. As I get my kids kinda going through school, I keep learning more and more that, of what I need to advocate for, for our community members, right? And what, how much I don't know. And it made me realize like, I didn't, I know that we have credits, right? For certain courses for eighth, eighth grade students, but not all courses, right? That can count into their high school years, depending on what track that they're in. I know that there's credits that exist. I know we've done a tremendous amount of work with our course selection handbook and all that from our N I S C and all the things that we're going through. I would love to see some of that come into the parent coffees where we hit the highlights, maybe, you know, a night for incoming eighth graders or, or it could be, you know, an afternoon or a morning. But we're parents, it could be open to everybody, but parents that have kids that are transitioning to the high school here, these, this is the pathways that are open to your child. These are the things that are happening. This is, you know, if you have a child that's going sophomore year, maybe to junior, junior to senior, this is why they need the Naviance. This is, this is how they apply to school. I know that we're already doing that in-house for our students. But as a parent, as we all know, sometimes our high school students don't tell us everything we want them to tell us, or they just don't know what they don't know. But, so if we could hear it.
Well, maybe in this day and age of technology, maybe counselors or Cadian could create little tutorial videos that you can post.
Yeah.
Share with parents and they can actually watch it.
And we've gotten, we've gotten fantastic blurbs more than ever from our guidance department, which I appreciate, those fantastic updates. But still like.
A little tutorial video to.
And, but maybe still those forums, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, if you can get the in-person forums going, yeah.
Because if we have people that have had children that have gone through, like I, you know, I feel like I'm mentored by so many other parents in this community that have children that have gone up.
Right.
And then they shed their wisdom on, and light into the situations that my kids have to go through. I learn so much more that way.
Yeah. No, I think it's good to offer both. If we could do in-person workshops, great. You know, some people can't make them, but if you have a little two or three minute video on, you know, credits, how does it work, you know, paths. So you know, you can have these little different screencastify videos or whatever you're gonna do.
Something, yeah, it's a great point.
That people can just keep referencing.
And then I noticed the bulletin boards that were in the hallway. I don't know if you wanna speak to this, Mr. Lucas, I'm putting you on the spot, but I noticed that there was one for fire safety, maybe nursing program and a potential early childhood education program? Is that what I read?
Yes, we will be updating you at a future meeting on those.
Okay.
All three of those. But we had some students get together and start promoting some of those things we wanna do with those programs.
So three potential new.
Our student, our high school student council and National Honor Society students, I believe, combined for that work that you saw in the hallway.
Okay.
So I can give you an update on that too.
Very exciting.
Yeah.
So maybe potentially, if it's ready, next meeting or the meeting after would be amazing to hear about that.
Sure, sure.
All right, anything else? We do have a future, our next meeting is Monday, the fourteenth of February, 2022. If you have any agenda items, please get them to me by, you know, that Monday, oh, excuse me, the week before, the Monday before, the seventh. And then we can get it to Helen, 'cause we'd like to get that agenda done by Wednesday before the meeting, okay?
All right.
If there's nothing else, we do need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All right, motion to second, no discussion. Call for the vote, Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yeah.
I'm a yes, four yes, one absent. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.